Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular school committee meeting of January 12th, 2021. The meeting of the PBD School Committee is being held in the Library of the Higgins Middle School for school committee members, superintendent, assistant superintendent, and central office administrators as requested by the superintendent. This is pursuant to Governor Baker's emergency order modifying the state's open meeting law. The regular meeting of the PBD School Committee will not allow in-person attendance to members of the public, but every effort will be made for the public to adequately access this meeting in real time via technological means. Alternative public access to this meeting is being provided in the following manner. This meeting is being televised by PBD Access TV, and real-time public participation can be addressed to the PBD School Committee utilizing Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. The application will allow users to view the meeting and make a comment during public participation. You will see a telephone number that you can utilize for that purpose. We will be taking the, calling the roll and taking attendance, and to that end, I would like to introduce, I'm Beverly Griffin Dunn. I'm serving as the vice chair and running the meeting this evening. May a betting court could not be with us, with us, Dr. Vidala and Dr. Lord, and then the school committee members. Dr. Lord, could you just take a roll call for us?
Mr. Amico.
President.
Mr. Anodis.
Present.
Ms. Carpenter.
President.
Mr. Olympio.
Present.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Lord. All right, if everyone would join me, we'll stand for a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. First order of business, could I hear a motion to receive and approve the minutes of the December 22nd regular school committee meeting?
Motion to approve December 22nd, 2020, regular school committee meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Anodis. Any discussion? There being none? Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Anodis?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, approval of bills. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 4669 dated January 12th, 2021, in the amount of $138,926.70, subject to audit.
Second.
Okay, the motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Anodis?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to approve warrant 4673 in the amount of $617,107.88 dated January 12th, 2021, subject to audit.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Any discussion, questions? Roll call vote.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Anodis?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Thank you, that is all.
Okay, thanks, Mrs. Carpenter. All right, continued business. A report of the Welch School MSBA project. I can tell you that this month, our regular scheduled meeting will take place on Thursday, January 14th at 9:30 in the morning. That meeting will be available online via Zoom, the same method we're utilizing for all of our meetings, and it will be an update for all the school building committee members to find out exactly where we are in the MSBA process, and it will be interesting. So, if there are any questions? Okay, thank you. All right, this being the first meeting of the year, of the calendar year, it's time for us to have our organizational meeting. So there are some components of the organizational meeting that we need to take care of right now. The first item of business is acceptance of the bylaws, and the bylaws are Section B of our policy manual. We do not have a copy of those bylaws with us tonight. There have been no changes since last year. If anyone wanted to make a motion to approve, accept, approve the bylaws, I would be willing to entertain that motion. If you would prefer to wait until we have copies at our next meeting, I would also entertain that for discussion. So I'll open it for discussion. Mr. Hawkman?
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. I was actually going to make a motion to refer these back to your subcommittee of quality and standards. It's been quite some time since we've had any updates on the bylaws. Actually, this is my, beginning my 12th year, I don't think we've updated them in my 12 years, and I know a few years ago I talked about it, and as we get busy, as the, you know, as the year goes on, I don't know that we've ever actually done that. So, being that we don't have them now, I'd be uncomfortable voting on them, but with that, I think it gives us an opportunity to perhaps review them and put in some proposed updates, and I think your committee is probably the best place.
Right.
Your subcommittee for that.
Yeah.
So if it's all right with everybody else, I'm going to make a motion to refer the bylaws to the quality and standards for, just to review. It's been a while, like I said.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Hawkman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Amico. All right, any further discussion? Okay. I do know that in the past 12 years, we have made a couple of corrections to the bylaws to adjust them to our practice at whatever time it was when we were adjusting them. For example, the agenda, the order of the agenda was changed. There were a few minor ones, but there's no problem at all with us going through that and updating that as well. So, we will take that vote, and then I would, I will suggest something afterwards. So if we could have a roll call?
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Anodis?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I would entertain a motion that we continue to proceed under the current bylaws that we have been using, just until such time as the, as the new adjusted bylaws come forward. Would anyone care to make that motion?
Some more.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Hawkman, seconded by Mr. Anodis. Okay, and a roll call vote?
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Anodis?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right. The moment we've all been waiting for. Yes, yes, I'm going to, we're going to keep this nice and, and, nice and honest, yes.
Stand up, Joe, stand up.
Yeah, oh, no, no, wait a minute, wait a minute. Chris, get, get, get that up high.
I'm not on camera, am I?
We want a Zoom lens on this.
Hi, hi. I'm a bigger video.
You're in that side of the room.
Nope.
No.
He's right there.
Oh, I can't wait to hear what you do.
Time to pack it up.
I'm okay, I'm okay, I'm all right.
I know, oh my goodness. Okay, oh, that's not bad. All right, wait a second before anybody goes anywhere. You got to, well, we could figure it out by where they sit, but let's see. Mr. Amico, what just?
Do I have number four?
Number four.
No, I don't.
Oh. Which one do you have?
Number three.
Oh, number three, oh, okay.
It's a running joke.
I know, because you two keep flipping back. All right, Mr. Anodis?
Number six.
Ah, congratulations, all right. Mrs. Carpenter?
Number four.
Mr. Hawkman, I'm assuming number one.
Number one.
Okay, and Mr. Olympio?
Number two.
Number two, and I have number five. All right.
Mr. Amico?
Thank you for helping us, Dr. Lord. Hopefully the mayor is watching this.
Hey, Joe, I'll sell it to you.
You rolling dice, huh?
I know, I know, we've got hand wash if anyone wants it.
Too far for numbers.
Oh, thanks, Andrew.
No problem.
That's too funny. Oh, thanks. Are you going to miss me now? Joe probably won't talk to me.
Yeah, make sure, we have to have six that we return.
We got six.
All right. There we go, and everyone out there is our witness.
I could have seen him.
Yes, Price Waterhouse keeps those under lock and key for two years.
Make the motion of redo the seating order?
All right, the next item of business is to nominate a new vice chair. Just so people understand, every year, we, the school committee changes the vice chair and the secretary of the school committee, as well as drawing new seats, which is our voting order. So this evening, we will be nominating a vice chair, and I would like to take the liberty of, as the current vice chair, of making a recommendation of a member, but Mr. Olympio, I'm going to let you finish.
Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Dunn.
I would like to thank everyone for allowing me to be vice chair this past year. It was really a wonderful experience. It, it, it was, it was great, and I appreciate all of your help, and I want to mention especially, it was just very rewarding to work closely with Superintendent Murtagh and with Dr. Curable, and then with Dr. Vidala, and I've learned a lot from them, and I hope I've been helpful to them. Being vice chair is truly an honor, and I just appreciate that, so thank you. The person that I would like to nominate is someone who does their homework, spends a lot of time on school committee issues, really puts a lot of time and effort into the discussions and the decisions that we make, and I appreciate that person very much, and I have a person in mind, but I think I'm going to let Mr. Olympio finish my thought.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Dunn, and I mean, just to pick up where you left off, she's certainly somebody that I believe we all look up to, she's a veteran of this committee, and again, she is always prepared and very well-respected, and I would recommend that we nominate Ms. Brandy Carpenter as the next vice chair of the PBD School Committee.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Anodis. Okay, discussion, Mr. Hawkman?
Motion to close the nominations for vice chair.
Very good, okay, thank you. All right, is there any other discussion on this? Okay, all right, the, just the names are closed, the motion has been made by Mr. Olympio, seconded by Mr. Anodis. We will take a roll call vote for the vice chair of the school committee.
Mr. Hawkman?
Brandy Carpenter.
Mr. Olympio?
Brandy Carpenter.
Mr. Amico?
Brandy Carpenter.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I think that's effective immediately.
I know, I was just going to say, do you want me to?
Finish that out, Beth.
I'll do the next one, and then we'll switch places, okay. All right. The next order of business is to nominate the secretary, and presently, Mr. Hawkman is secretary, so would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. It has been an interesting year to serve as secretary as well as vice chair of this committee. I don't know that anyone's ever served with three superintendents in the same year. Certainly was a challenging time, and, but in any event, thank you all for nominating and voting for me last year to be secretary, and I too have a worthy person who I wish to place into nomination to be secretary, and I make a motion that we nominate Joseph Amico to be secretary of the school committee.
Second.
Very good, okay. Motion by Mr. Hawkman, seconded by Mr. Olympio. Is there any discussion? Mr. Amico, you can't turn it down. All right, well, that's wonderful, okay, I think we can move on that motion. Dr. Lord?
Joseph Amico.
Mr. Olympio.
Joseph Amico.
Mr. Amico?
President.
Ms. Carpenter?
Joseph Amico.
Ms. Dunn?
Joseph Amico.
And Mr. Anodis?
Joseph Amico.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, well, at this moment, I will relinquish the chair, trade it with Mrs. Carpenter, wish you well, I hope you have a good year too, and again, thank you, everyone.
Just a minute, Mrs. Dunn, if I may, through the chair.
Sure.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all the time that you spent as chair. It was very difficult, and it was challenging, and it was under extremely different circumstances, and you did a great job, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you all. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank the one constant through everything we've gone through, Dr. Lord.
Yes.
Who's also been a great help to follow us. All right, we'll take a two-minute recess so we can congratulate everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you, we just took a short recess, and we are now back in session. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, and I will turn it over to Dr. Vidala.
Hey, thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. So we have a small agenda tonight for the superintendent report. We have a new update on MCAS. I do want to update everyone on the vaccines for influenza and COVID-19, and then a quick health and safety update that will go over the community metrics, rationale for the decision to engage in remote learning at the high school for this week only, and today I attended a webinar on cool testing that the department is doing a pilot on, so we'll give some updates on that and talk about what the next steps are. So updates from the commissioner on MCAS. They modified the competency determination for the class of 2021, which basically means that seniors do not need to take MCAS this year. If they have not taken it yet or they have not passed yet, they can graduate similar to last year's seniors by passing a relevant course in that subject area. So that is very good news. They were scheduled to take it in this window beginning today, so they did push that off. They also pushed off the juniors and seniors. So they are looking at, I'm sorry, they pushed off the juniors and sophomores. Currently, they are still planning on assessing students with a shortened MCAS test in grades three through eight, as well as grades 10 and 11 at this time. However, we are still working on our advocacy. They are looking at this for diagnostic purposes and not for accountability, so they wouldn't identify schools as underperforming. So, this is a step in the right direction. It's not exactly what we had talked about at the last meeting, so we will continue our advocacy. At this time, I understand the need for a diagnostic level, but in PBD, we have our local metrics that we're using, the star reading, the star math, and some of our other local metrics that we're using, and personally, you know, I feel like when we start posting the MCAS, the data for accountability purposes across the state, there's a tendency for people to compare one school versus the other, and I think during the pandemic where, you know, just instruction has been so varied across the Commonwealth, I don't think it's fair to school districts to pit one school against another based on the model or the impact that COVID-19 has had on families. So we'll continue our advocacy on, on MCAS, you know, with, with a new president coming in and Secretary Cardona, you know, being nominated for the Secretary of Education, there may be a possibility for a federal waiver, so we'll continue to explore that, but we will continue to participate, you know, as, as, as we would be required to. You know, I definitely value assessments and make sure that they are for diagnostic purposes so that they can inform our instruction and really help students. And to that end, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Lord quickly to discuss a remote MCAS pilot that the department is doing.
Thanks, Dr. Vidala. I just wanted to give a shout out to the teachers who have stepped up and volunteered at all levels to participate in a MCAS pilot, so we will get an idea about what this will look like if it does indeed happen in the coming months. The fourth grade at the Welch is jumping in on this program, I think they're starting their MCAS pilot tomorrow. There are two seventh grade classes here at the Higgins that'll be engaged, and I believe they're also starting tomorrow, and the high school's going to wait till the next Wednesday, I believe it's the 27th, as a math class is going to jump in. There needs to be parent waivers, the kids will be monitored for how they're taking their tests, I don't think it's going to take very long, but the information I think we gather from that will really prepare our students to be able to do well when we get there, because the logistics is the main issue with this stuff, and if the kids can understand how it's going to be worked, they'll have a much better opportunity to, you know, be successful, because, you know, they'll, they'll have had that, that knowledge ahead of time. So, I want to thank those kids and those teachers for jumping in with the practice testing, and let us know how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lord, and one of the rationales for doing is just to really find out what the experience is, give our students that experience, just so that they know what to expect, and our teachers, just around lessons learned, since it is, you know, that the kids will be held harmless, their scores won't, won't be reported, but we think it'll be a good experience if they ever need to go into a remote testing environment, will at least be early adopters and, and have an idea of what's going on. So, we felt like it was important for us to be able to give our kids that experience in case it was, we'll continue our advocacy on the other end, but, you know, we still want to plan if, if this does happen, if there is an opportunity for remote, that our kids are prepared, our teachers know what to expect, and that we're ready to go for The next item on my agenda is vaccinations, so there are two vaccinations that are important to think about at this time. So the influenza vaccine, or the flu vaccine, is being required of all children to attend school unless they meet the criteria for either medical or religious exemption. That deadline has been pushed back to February 28th, 2021, and so our public health nurses have been working with families, and, you know, we'll continue to work with them and send out notifications around if anyone is missing the flu vaccine and they don't have one of the exemptions, we'll continue to work on that. So that deadline was moved from December 31st to February 28th, so we'll keep everybody updated on that. A lot has been discussed about the COVID vaccine. The first responders in PBD are currently receiving the vaccinations. We're working closely with the public health department, and we're able to utilize PBD High School's field house during off teaching hours, so this was scheduled during times when student would not be in the building, and it was really important for us, because one, we have a very good partnership with the public health department, but two, it's also very helpful for us to see how the logistics go and make sure that we're able to effectively roll out the vaccine, one, for our first responders, but as we get into Phase Two for the educators, which will be somewhere between February and April, we'll have an idea of how it's done, we'll know the logistics of it, and we'll be able to roll that out as, as effectively and efficiently as we can. So, we're anticipating sometime between February and April that we made the decision that we would continue with winter sports, games, and practices. They would continue as scheduled. So for example, tonight is the first game for boys and girls basketball. We wish all the players and coaches luck. And then we are on track and we're expecting to return to in-person learning on Tuesday, January 19th. So I'll pause there for any questions before I go on to the next item.
Any questions? Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you. I have a question regarding the quarantine requirements. Are they published on our website? I don't know if you could tell them to me, you know, offhand. But I just wanted to know because a lot of people are getting very confused about the quarantine, if there've been a close contact. That seems to be where most of my questions have been coming from.
All of that information is handled through the public health department. They share with me the positive cases. They don't share the number of close contacts. They do keep track of it and so we can get a report from the public health department on the exact number of close contacts. I know last month they had shared sort of an overall, this is a snapshot of where we are. So we can get that. But we don't share that information out with the community. That was something that was not recommended, that, you know, people's medical information wasn't shared.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean that. What I meant was, does someone have to, you know, how long do they have to wait for a test? How long is it before they can come back? That type of...
Yeah, so each case is very individual. I know they have a 14, a 10, and a seven depending on the requirement. So everyone is handled individually and the public health department goes through. And that's where a lot of that contact tracing comes in, that they go through individually with each person. And it is confusing for different people. So we always refer people to the public health department because they are the experts in that area.
And the public health, Mrs. Cameron and her staff, they're the ones that are contacting everybody and letting them know so that it's very definite.
And the public health nurses, yes, they're doing unbelievable work.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Amico?
Thank you for the chair. So at one of our meetings in December, we had discussed in our athletics subcommittee regarding attendance at our events, our basketball games. And that was chaired by Mr. Hockman and Ms. Carpenter is also part of that subcommittee. We came to an agreement. We made a motion to allow one parent per student. And we brought it out into our public session and we decided to table that for another meeting. So I'd like to bring that out now with making a motion and amending it a little bit. After giving it some thought, and I think we've all talked to a number of student athletes, their parents. We've received letters, phone calls, emails. I do think at this point it is the right time to make a motion to allow two guests per player at our home games at the high school. And the reason why I would say two guests is I, and we can amend it. We could open it up for discussion after my motion. But I do think that we should at least have one adult. I won't say a parent because it could be a guardian, it could be a grandparent, it could be a sponsor. But I would say that it has to be one adult. And, you know, if it is another child, that's fine. But preferably two adults per student athlete. And it would be varsity only to start.
Is that a motion, Mr. Amico?
That's a motion. Well, I can clean it up, but I just wanted to put it out there as, if we can get a second and then have a discussion on it, that would be great.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Olympio?
Yeah, I'm certainly in agreement with the motion. But I'm just curious, why just varsity? I mean, if JV is playing at a different time, I mean, to me, I would want to include junior varsity.
Just a point of information before we move on. When we had this discussion, I believe we did discuss that as well. You know, I personally would like to see spectators in there for all levels. I believe that Mr. Buah had mentioned they play at the same time or back-to-back. So there was some logistics in there. But if we could work out those logistics, I am in favor of it. Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. You look good on the big screen, by the way. So, Mr. Amico, thank you for bringing this motion. We did discuss it in athletics and wellness subcommittee about a month ago now. And there were some delays that were necessary due to some of the information brought forward by Dr. Vedala in his superintendent's report. I agree that I'd like to see spectators for, we're really just talking about basketball. Because, and Mr. Amico, I will ask you to, if we can make certain, some amendments to your motion so that we get this tight. The spectators are only for PBD athletes, not for visiting athletes, and only for sporting events that are held in PBD facilities, whether they be PBD public school facilities or city-owned facilities, which I don't think there are any in the winter. So it's pretty much we're talking about basketball. When we did talk about this at the subcommittee, Mr. Buah did express some reservations. And, you know, I certainly respect his opinion on this matter. He is our athletic director. But we did have some conversations about, I think we're talking about freshman JV and varsity, three levels. The bleachers, we only utilize one side of the bleachers. The student athletes are using the other side of the bleachers on the bench side of the court so that they can socially distance while they're on the bench. But we talked about using the bleachers if it's 12 kids on each team, which I don't think there's any more than 12 players on any basketball team. It's about 12. So we're talking about maximum of 24 people. I think we would be able to use a section of the bleachers for each level or maybe a section and a half. I think there's like six sections. When I say sections, I'm talking about dissected by a stairwell. So I think that we can section off portions of the bleachers for different groups, different levels of student athletes' performance. So I would ask for that amendment to be made too. Because I think we can accommodate, and again, respectfully, it is a little more work. It is a little more monitoring, if you will. But hopefully, we're into COVID for 10 months now. Hopefully, people, parents or spectators are cognizant of the efforts that are being made so that they can watch their student athletes play and are respectful of the rules that are set up. I cannot imagine at this point that somebody, I mean, we're playing sports, you know, elsewhere with, you know, one spectator or no spectators. And so, you know, just because it's the high school level and it's been a hard enough year, you know, especially seniors, you know, who missed a part of their junior season and are impacted in their senior year. So I'm in favor of this. I would just ask Mr. Amico to make those two amendments, or three amendments. One, that it's PBD students only, student athletes only that are permitted spectators. Two, that it's only in PBD facilities, PBD public facilities. And three, all levels of participation.
Motion is amended. Still on the second, Mr. Anotis?
Thank you. Are we settled on that portion of it? I don't want to just change, in a sense. I have something different I'd like to ask about on that, if we're, okay. My question is just on the guest itself versus, you know, who is actually allowed in. As Mr. Hockman said, you know, it's been a tough time for people. There's nothing that I think might help folks right now if they have the opportunity to have a break in their day and come see, you know, their kid play their game. I think that's certainly something that we can accommodate and work to. I would prefer it to be a family member, guardian, someone of that nature rather than the term guest, you know, whether it's immediate family or your guardian, whether it be a grandparent, you know, aunt, uncle, whoever, you know, is your person in that sense. I would be concerned using the term guest because I could see that if you didn't have, you know, your two guardians or however your household works, if they didn't want to go and you said, okay, well, I'm going to have, you know, Joey from down the street and, you know, this person and that person, that's an issue as far as I'm concerned. That's not really the intent of this as far as I'm concerned. It's about letting our family see their students play. And I'd like us to stick in that route rather than kind of make it a little bit more wide-ranging. So that's what I would like us to amend if we can.
And I do think that's the right thing to do, Mr. Anotis. Initially, I had meant that. I used the term guest just as a, but yes, it should be a parent, a guardian, a grandparent, someone who is close family relative to that student athlete. So yes, if we can amend that as well.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Mrs. Dunn?
Trying to remember exactly the questions someone had asked me. But they wanted to be able to see the games even if they couldn't be there. And their understanding was in order to, like, livestream a game, they would need permission. Is that the truth? I didn't think that that was necessary. If someone is playing a game and someone is videoing it. But if we can make sure that people know that if they want to, you know, tape the game and livestream it, that that would be okay, if that's okay.
Mr. Amico?
Livestream as in someone has a phone or, other than maybe PAT, is that what you're...
Yeah.
Through the chair, okay. I guess you can't really keep someone from not doing that. But I do think PAT has agreed to help out in any way, which, you know, and I believe they already telecast the varsity games and maybe if they're there earlier, they can do the JV games as well or a freshman. You know, that's something that PAT, we can work out with PAT. They've been fantastic. So I'm sure if they can, they will. I won't speak for them, but they've proven over the years that they are willing to do things for us at any point. So hopefully, they can. But a secondary person doing it, I don't think there's anything we can do to stop them from that if they have a phone or a video camera of some sort.
Yeah, I honestly, all I could think of was I know we have provisions in our own policy about photographing some, there are some students who are not allowed to be photographed for security reasons. My thought is if they're on an athletic team, that they may have given permission. I don't know. My suggestion to the person was speak to the coach. See if the coach will let you do it.
And if I may, I would just recommend permission ahead of time. So if they're planning on doing something like that, to not just show up and do it, but to speak to somebody ahead of time just so we can work out the kinks and be prepared for it. You know, you'd hate to see someone be asked to take, put the phone away or take the video camera down or whatever. I don't know what it is that they're looking to do. But I think if they reach out to our office or they reach out to the school or the coach, you know, we could probably work something out. But it'd be helpful to do it ahead of time, just so that there's no surprises.
Right, okay.
Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, thank you. Just for a point of information, PAT is broadcasting most games, if not all games already. I have that on good authority from Mr. Palmer, who's running our meeting tonight. They may not all be live, you know, some of them may be taped and rebroadcast, but the most, if not all, are. If we can take that motion up, I think Ms. Dunn makes an extremely valid point with regard to third parties filming and then rebroadcasting events that are taking place. And Dr. Vedala, I think you're absolutely right that we need to have people who are going to do that talk to coaches or athletic directors or something. But I think perhaps, you know, at least for this season when that's going to happen, and maybe moving forward because I think it's probably happened already and it's probably going to happen again in the future with Facebook Live and other platforms that are able to do this. But we should probably develop a waiver for parents or student athletes to sign just so that if there is an issue, and it is a serious issue when it is an issue for people who are students or sometimes adults who shouldn't be broadcast on mainstream platforms. So let's take up Mr. Amico's motion first. And then I think I'd make a motion to ask the athletic director to draft a waiver for that purpose and then we can vote on that.
And just going through the chair, just going back to our original motion at our athletics subcommittee, when we talked about one participant. So we're really going out of our, not going out of our way, but we're really, we want to see kids, we want to see parents enjoy their kids playing basketball. And I think someone had alluded to it earlier. We want people to do the right thing because this is something that's very important to parents. It's very important to students. So I would ask that, you know, we definitely make sure we talk to team leaders, team captains, coaches, and parents just to really let them know how much of an impact this could be if things don't go right. We want things to go right, you know? We want people to enjoy their kids at an athletic event. We want people to do the right thing. So I just hope that we can get to the parents, student athletes, and coaches and really let them know that we want this to happen. But, you know, we'll also take a look at it down the road if we have to, to make adjustments to it.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. So on your motion that has been amended is to allow two guests. Not, but you don't want the word guests. You'd like to, I just want to add to this that, you know, I'm not sure how the management is going to go of who we're allowing in. In the past, we've had, when we were giving two tickets for free, somebody would sit at the door and they would say the player's name and they would get checked off and two people could get in for free. There's also been a system where passes were given out. I think we might have a little bit of work to do in regards to who is being allowed in when you say parent, guardian, could be a sibling, could be an aunt. You know, I'm not sure how you want to phrase it.
And that's why I wanted to bring it to the committee through the chair. And because it's not only parents, you know? We live in a world where students have many advocates, students have many sponsors. So I wanted to make sure that every student athlete is represented. To say parent or guardian, if the committee is okay with that, we can stick with that.
Mr. Olympio?
I mean, I was just thinking, my son plays travel basketball and it seems to work pretty well there. They have a roster on a table and they'll say, you know, who are you here to see? And you just check it.
coaches, and parents, just to really let them know how much of an impact this could be if things don't go right. We want things to go right. We want people to enjoy their kids at an athletic event. We want people to do the right thing. So I just hope that we can get to the parents, student athletes, and coaches, and really let them know that we want this to happen, but we'll also take a look at it down the road if we have to, to make adjustments to it.
Thank you, Mr. Amico. So on your motion that has been amended is to allow two guests, but you don't want the word guests, you'd like two. I just want to add to this that I'm not sure how the management is going to go of who we're allowing in. In the past, we've had, when we were giving two tickets for free, somebody would sit at the door and they would say the player's name and they would get checked off and two people could get in for free. There's also been a system where passes were given out. I think we might have a little bit of work to do in regards to who is being allowed in when you say parent, guardian, could be a sibling, could be an aunt. You know, I'm not sure how you want to phrase it.
And that's why I wanted to bring it to the committee through the chair, because it's not only parents.
Right.
We live in a world where students have many advocates, students have many sponsors. So I wanted to make sure that every student athlete is represented. To say parent or guardian, if the committee is okay with that, we can stick with that.
Mr. Olympia?
I mean, I was just thinking, my son plays travel basketball and it seems to work pretty well there. They have a roster on a table and they'll say, "Who are you here to see?" And you just check it off that way. I don't know if I'd want to restrict it to guardian or parent. I think what Mr. Arnottis, he brought up a great point, is, I mean, if there's a grandparent or an aunt and uncle, but we don't necessarily want the two 17-year-old kids down the street showing up saying, and you'd like to think that somebody comes to a desk and relationship the player. They say, "Oh, we're friends," then that's a problem. But if it's uncle so-and-so and auntie so-and-so, because the parents or guardian are working or unavailable, then to me, that's fine. But those travel basketball games, they have a roster right there and you just, that's a nice way to police it. And then as far as the overage, like if the JV is just finishing up, I mean, a lot of, you have to wait outside the building until everybody's clear, that kind of thing.
I know that Dr. Lord does want to speak to the matter. My suggestion is to make the motion for guests and let the administration handle it at the door check-in. We're not talking about a large crowd being in there, so it's easily identified if there's a group of kids there, if that's what the concern is.
Yeah.
But Dr. Lord, did you have some?
Just a suggestion, it sounds like we're talking about a family supporter of that athlete.
A family supporter? That's a good word.
There you go.
Good two words.
It may be a scout, maybe a college scout.
Yeah.
So I'd like to keep it broad too, and I think Ms. Carpenter is correct. I mean, we're not talking about a mad rush of people coming to the gate.
Talking 25, maybe 20.
Yeah. And with this, while we're talking about who's going to be there, depending upon how it goes, and maybe later on in the season, maybe we do have a game for students only. I mean, I think some school spirit might be nice at some point, but we have a condensed season, but we'll have a season. But we could take that up in a meeting or two, but I don't want to muddy tonight's waters too much. But just to throw the thought out there, it's a possibility in the future.
Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Actually, what Mr. Olympia was talking about, using the roster with notation, that could be very helpful if there was ever a need for contact tracing.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I would encourage that type of a system to be utilized as well.
Phone number.
Yeah.
It's a good one. So on this 15 amended motion.
Always keeping guessing.
Is this the first motion under Ms. Carpenter's tenure?
Yes. Mr. Arnottis, did you have anything else?
I'll be very brief. How about that? And I won't add any more amendments to it. No, I'm going to support this. I'm just doing my best here and I don't want to be a skunk at the garden party. I just, if we want to trust our staff to make sure we're not having groups of students congregate at this, I think obviously we all know it's a difficult time right now. We're doing this for the benefit of our families and people that are close to our athletes who just want to be there and support them and watch the game. That's the intent here. So if we want to use the term guest and ask our staff to be smart and make sure that we're letting in the appropriate contacts of our athletes, that's fine with me. But I hope people are cognizant of the fact that we don't want friends and outside influences coming in to that. This is more of a family, close person decision we're making.
Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you, since we're keeping it open. And I would hope that there's no fee, no fee to enter. So I know we have set up fees in the past for basketball in particular, no fee.
Great compromise.
Okay, so on the motion, to allow two players, two guests per player for all levels, JV and varsity.
And freshmen, right?
And freshmen, all levels. What were the other pieces? Was that it?
Yeah.
That was really short for such a long conversation.
PBD facilities.
PBD facilities, PBD students at our home games. Just PBD. Okay. Leanna, are you getting all that?
Who's on side? Oh, never mind.
So that's your amended motion. Do you still have a second for Mr. Arnottis?
Absolutely.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Can I vote as the chair?
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
And Mr. Arnottis?
Yes.
You can vote, you can make a motion.
I can vote, so I would vote yes. Motion carries.
No, you can't vote. As a vice chair, sitting as chair, you can't vote.
I can't vote?
No.
Well, you can step down.
You can vote.
Yes.
No, no, the rabbit rule allows the chair to vote.
Does it?
You just can't make a motion.
Okay.
The mayor can vote on everything.
No, he can only vote in the case of a tie.
I don't believe, we can look at, we'll look at it. Put it into quality and standards.
Mr. Hoffman, I believe you had a motion involved in all of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Hoffman, if I may, you had asked about videotaping and whatnot.
Yeah.
I would just recommend that we just look at our current policies and I'll report back to the committee. I believe we have current policies within our student handbooks about things like this, so we will review them and get back.
Yes. And just on the topic of the athletics, the other facilities are not run or owned by PBD public schools, so we do not have that authority at that time, which is why we just brought up the basketball. Anything else, Dr. Vidal?
Yes, my last item on my health and safety update is an opportunity that we are currently exploring. No decision has been made. Dr. Lord and I attended a webinar today about pooled testing. Some people may have heard about this. The department is looking into a six-week pilot. Salem Public Schools and Watertown Public Schools were on the panel, as well as Medford, that have already done pooled testing. And so we wanted to provide a little bit of information. There's still some research and information that we need to do. Our nurse leader and public health director both attended this webinar as well. We're going to schedule a meeting to talk to them, and I'll talk a little bit about the next steps. So this is very early on, but we just wanted to put the information out there. So pooled testing is basically, it involves mixing, you can anywhere between 10 and 25 samples or swabs. And so what they're doing is, it's like a nasal swab, and they batch or pool them together and they test it as one sample. So they would be performed once a week with consent of either the student or the staff member, and it's a short swab, it's a nasal swab, and you get the results within 24 to 48 hours. So if the entire, if the pool is negative, you assume that everyone in the pool is negative and then you proceed. If the pool is positive, then all individuals within that pool would need to be tested individually with a rapid test to see if, which individual in that pool would be positive. So it's sort of a broad brush. There are definitely some benefits and some concerns that we have. So the benefits of pooled testing is that it does allow you the ability to test large numbers of individuals efficiently, so you could test your entire student population or your entire staff. And another benefit is that DESI is offering a free six-week pilot, so it would be fully funded for the first six weeks. And it does identify either asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic cases ahead of time, so it does provide that broad brush. And there is a potential for bringing back more students to in-person learning. So one of the things that the department is recommending is that if you do engage in this, it's to either keep in your hybrid model or maybe increase the number of kids that you are serving across the Commonwealth. Some of the concerns, and I have talked to Sharon Cameron about this a little bit, just the staffing capacity to test the entire district weekly and to make sure that we have the protocols down is a concern, and that's one of the things that we're going to discuss in depth. The logistics around retesting those samples and getting it out to the lab and making sure we get it back in a timely manner, so that we're not quarantining too many people that might be a, that might just happen to be in a pool. The potential for false positives is, anytime you do large numbers of testing, there is always that potential, so we want to put that out there. If there is a false positive, that's when we do the follow-up testing. Consent is required. So in order to do this, Watertown currently has 78% of their population, Medford has in the 80% of their population, they have all consented to do it. So we would need a critical number in order to make this work, in order to do it. So again, we're just exploring this. There's a lot more information that we need before we decide to engage in this. And then sustainability is definitely a concern. So each swab, after the six-week period, each swab would cost $5. So if we were testing, we have 6,000 students, let's say approximately 4,000 are in person, plus all of our staff members, custodians, food services, clerical staff, everybody who's in the building, support staff as well, we'd be looking at around $20,000 to $25,000 a week to sustain this beyond the six-week period. It is eligible for the reimbursement within the COVID money from some of the grants. It's just a matter of, is this how we want to allocate that money over the weeks? We have to think about that. We are still continuing to do our free testing twice a month here at the Higgins, so we're going to do those drive-throughs. We are committed to continuing that, so that is also of concern for us. No decisions have been made, but in terms of next steps, as I said, Dr. Lord and I attended the webinar today. We plan on meeting with the public health department and the nurse leader in the next day or so, and then we'll also meet with the union leadership in units A, B, C, and AFSMI to sort of go over what is, what is the desire to do this? They're not asking us to require it, and so they're actually saying that it's not recommended to require students or teachers to engage in testing if they don't feel comfortable. So it would fully be an optional opt-in if we did that. If we decide that we're interested, we would solicit feedback from staff and families by either a survey or something, just to see what is the appetite to do this? And then the final determination of participation in this pilot, we would make collectively as a group and then communicate that to our school community. So this is very much on the beginning phases of this. We're still gathering more information, but where it has been in the news and people have been talking about, I want to provide as much information as possible upfront and certainly update everyone at the next school committee meeting. I know that some local districts have done it. You hear that a lot of college athletes, a lot of college sports teams have been doing it. Definitely makes sense in that because all of the team would be a close contact if you're playing sports without masks on, the way that they're doing at the college level. That would make a lot of sense to do the pooled testing, because they're already close contacts. You know, testing 25 people, we'd have to be very specific about what pools we would use. We don't want to inadvertently have to quarantine more people than necessary. So a lot of information out there on it. We need to get more information, but I just wanted to provide a broad brush of what's out there so far and what information we have.
Thank you, Dr. Vidal. Mr. Arnottis?
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Vidal, for explaining that. You know, I think we all keep hearing that term pop up a bit, so appreciate the explanation. Now, I would expect it probably does have to be consecutive, so I don't know. That six-week trial, is there any way, obviously, because it does sound like it would take some time if we were to even do this. So is it possible to break that six weeks up? You know, is it per week or is it just you're locked in for the first six weeks and then you're done by February? Because it would be great if we could drag it out, you know.
So the start date, I think there's some flexibility around that. Realistically, it probably wouldn't start until February, just, I think logistically.
Yeah.
And so we are going to explore more information, but they do require, if you are participating, that it's consecut, everyone is tested weekly to ensure that they have that consistency. So you couldn't do every other week, you have to do it consistently per week, but I think the start date may have a little flexibility, but I'll look into it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Dr. Vidal, thank you. This, I'm really encouraged to hear about this program. I think it's excellent. You know, the more we learn about the COVID virus, the more avenues that people need to do research. This alone is going to help with the research, because one of the biggest problems is asymptomatic people who show no signs of COVID, they're not aware if they have it, and yet someone else is catching COVID from them and then they actually become very ill with it. I think it would help in many ways, they are still trying to figure out how COVID reacts with children, and that's important. That's very important with the, just with the day-to-day operation of our school system. So I'm really happy about that and I'm looking forward to the next meeting when you give us more information. I would also say, if you need a vote of this committee before our next meeting in order whether to participate or not, please call an emergency meeting if need be to get that vote.
Mr. Amico?
Thank you, Dr. Vidal, for bringing this to us. And I agree with Ms. Dunn on this. You know, in fact, I think we should make a motion to have Dr. Vidal and central office continue this, and if there is an opportunity that we become part of the study, then include the unions and the community. That way, we don't have to have a special meeting. I mean, we've, you know, PBD is one of the only districts that has gone into school fully, well, not fully hybrid, and fully at the elementary and middle school level. So I would say, this is something that is made for what we are already doing. This is an asset. So I would, I'd say that I'd like to make a motion to authorize Dr. Vidal and central office to work with DESI and move forward with it.
I'll second the motion. Discussion on the motion, Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you. We may be getting back to normal times within this meeting, because I'm extremely reluctant, and I wouldn't be voting in favor of this motion. We're talking about testing people who, in groups, just because they're in a group, not because they exhibit symptoms of a virus, not because they've been exposed to anyone who has the virus. I mean, those at least are the criteria to this point, and we're a public body. We're not a testing site where people voluntarily go to, and I'm happy that we use our facilities for testing sites such as the Higgins. I'm happy that we use our field house at the high school as a site for the administration of the vaccine. Those I'm perfectly fine with. But we're now acting as a government body, where we're going to take pools of people merely because they're members of the PBD public school system, and we're going to, you say, you know, and I appreciate you bringing this to us, Dr. Vidal. Don't take me wrong here, don't take it wrong, but we're crossing over, boy, a serious line. You know, Dr. Vidal, in his superintendent's report, talked about two types of vaccinations. One was for influenza and one was for COVID-19. And influenza came out, the obligation to vaccinate for influenza came out, and then immediately after that came all these exceptions. And there are constitutional rights that people have that can't, where the government can't compel even medical treatment under certain circumstances. We're now going to be taking a population of minors, people under the age of 18, and there's going to be differences of opinion, there's already peer pressure, and we're a country divided on this issue, just go to Facebook and Twitter. The virus is real, I'm not minimizing the impact of the virus, but, boy, I'd be reticent to now take a pool of, I don't want to, I don't want to, I want to say it, but I don't want to say it, of guinea pigs for data collection from our students. I'm just, at this point, I'm extremely reluctant to, I'd like more information. I mean, I like the approach that Dr. Vidal is taking and providing us with more information as these webinars and as information comes forward. I certainly want to hear the information, because I want to make an informed decision. But with the information I have now, I couldn't support this. If we have the time to do this, by the way, you know, I'd like to see more instruction. If we have the time to commit to testing, whatever the pools of students, whatever the number would be within our system and staff, I think you mentioned staff also, boy, I'd like to see that time utilized for instruction and not testing, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Mr. Olympia?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Vidal, for bringing this, and really, I agree with Mr. Hoffman. My heart skipped a beat for a moment there with, I would like to have more information and actually probably go at the pace that you suggested, Dr. Vidal. Not going to, you know, I agree with much of what Mr. Hoffman said, so I would not be in favor of this at this time.
Mr. Arnottis?
Thank you. No, I certainly echo your concerns with privacy, and you know, there is a line between the government bodies and what we have to do here, but we are in unique times, I would say, and it's not as if this is involuntary. This is a voluntary program. So no one is participating in this that wouldn't want to participate if we were to pursue it. You know, there's no one forced into it, and when it comes to data collection, we're already doing that. I mean, we do data collection every day on COVID-related cases. You know, we were just talking about that, and you know, we're sitting You know, we, we were just talking about that, and, you know, we're sitting here now with our high school closed because our numbers are so high. And, you know, I, I think we've gotten to the point here that we are doing everything we can, and I, I do believe we are doing everything we can to keep people physically in our buildings, and any tool that we can add to continue to do that, I believe this would be one of them if we continue to move forward with that. I mean, we are in probably the, I think it's actually the, it's worse than it was in the spring right now, this pandemic, and, you know, our schools were closed then, they're open now. We've seen that transmission is basically in existent in our buildings, and I think if we want to continue keeping our buildings open, this is something, you know, we should think about, because right now, we're in the situation that so many people have to quarantine. You know, if this could have prevented it, you know, that may be something that we need to think about. But again, this is voluntary. You know, we're certainly not forcing anyone to do anything, to participate in anything that they don't want to do. You know, we're making this available to them. Mr. Amico, your motion more was to allow Dr. Vidal, if he, was it if he chose to pursue this? Was that correct? I'm just curious. I mean, I'm going to support this, but...
To the chair, yes, Mr. Arnotis. Thank you, and, and thank you to Mr. Olympia and Mr. Hawkman. And my reasoning is if DESI is looking for a pilot program, then, you know, we've already been doing this. Like I said, you know, with all the contact tracing and, and I, and I know it is a little bit different, but, you know, we've been, we've been in school since September. Most districts still aren't in school, so I just think that we've, we've shown a propensity to, to get kids and, and teachers into the building and, and do the right thing, and I just think that this is, this is part of it, and we want to continue this, and, you know, especially if vaccines come down the pike, we, we may be able to get back into a normal educational setting by the end of the year if, if all goes well. And I just think that giving Dr. Vidal and Central Office and, and his team the ability to, to talk to DESI and, and to continue discussions, and if they, if it's something that they want to do, just bring it back to us, and we'll already be ahead of the game, so to speak. So that was, that was my motion.
So, so I would just like to add on this motion and just, and I'm just going to let it be known that I am going to take the liberty of, of voting at the meetings unless it's otherwise proven that I cannot. I will not make any motions, so I do intend on voting on this, and I just want to let it be known that I am not comfortable on voting on any motions regarding this. I am comfortable with the next steps as they're listed, and that's, you know, where I am at on that, but I am not comfortable on taking any type of other action. I think this is very reasonable. It gathers a lot of information that I personally, myself, would like to, to see before this body takes any action, so I just wanted to, to let that part be known. But I know that a few members are still wanting to talk about it, and Mrs. Dunn, I believe you had your hand up.
No, I, I thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. I just wanted to reiterate much of what Mr. Amico has said, that this is voluntary. Mr., Mr. Arnotis explained that as well. It's completely voluntary, and I think that we should offer that opportunity to people because it's important. If someone is asymptomatic, they're not going to go and be tested. But if they have the COVID virus and they're asymptomatic and this test shows it, then you have that added protection of being able to protect the people around that person. I think it's very important, and I also do think, yes, there is going to be data that is going to be transmitted into the state, but as Mr. Arnotis said, we're, we're transmitting data every day. This is, it is completely voluntary, and I'm, I'm surprised it is not a violation of the constitutional rights. We would not require anyone to have that test. It is strictly by consent, and the only people who would be contacted would be the people who are in whatever the pool is determined by the test administrators if they discovered that there were positive cases in that pool. I, I'm, I'm surprised and disappointed because I will continue to advocate for this. I think not only would it give us good information and help keep our staff and students safe, I also think it would give people peace of mind. Thank you.
Just before we move on, just to maybe help this a little bit, Dr. Vidal, is there any reason why you would need any action tonight before our next school committee meeting?
And thank, thank you, Ms. Carpenter. I think, I think we're all on the same page, and I think that we need more information. I think it's intriguing, but I'm not, I'm not committed tonight to make a decision. We need to really work this out, and I, and I, and Dr. Lord and I definitely need to meet with the Public Health Department before we make any decision. We're exploring the option to do this, and my intent to bring this tonight was just to keep people informed. It wasn't to divide the committee, it wasn't to start, and I think we're all on the same page, and, and I would just recommend, let's continue with these next steps, let's continue to explore the option, and we will bring this up at the next school committee meeting, and I think if you all have more information, we may, we may all be able to make a, a better informed decision. That, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Amico?
Sure. Based on that, I will withdraw my motion.
Motion withdrawn.
Thank you for the great discussion, though.
You know, and just real quick, I mean, that's what, I want more information. I mean, I can be, lack of a better word, talk, you know, the other way. I just, I'm just uncomfortable with, like, I know it's voluntary, but what if we don't have a not, like, what if there's a class, a, a group of, just happens to be a group of students that their parents don't, I mean, how does that work? I mean, it's...
More information.
Yeah, I just need more, that's all. I just...
Yeah. Mr. Arnotis, did you still want to add anything?
That's all. It's...
No, I'm fine with, you know, waiting for more information. I mean, I understand it, you know, I certainly, it sounds like this is something we do need to learn about. I certainly respect that. That's no issue for me. You know, I do feel like we're living in a time now where two, two weeks feels like a year, so, you know, the urgency of things is, I think, a little bit more important. And I do also want to point out that a benefit that I think is a bit lost with this that would be beneficial to folks is not everyone has the time to wait in a four-hour line to get a free COVID test. So some of our working families might benefit from this if we were to make it. I don't know if it's a take-home, if it's the one where you spit or whatever it is. I know there's a few different take-home COVID tests right now, but if this were to be one where it's something that someone can do at home and they can send it in, however that process would go, or if it's, you know, conducted somewhere, I get the sense it would probably be more efficient than, you know, waiting in a long line of cars. So I do think that would be an added benefit, but I respect, you know, the opinion of all of you to learn more about this, and, you know, I'm sure we'll talk about this in two weeks.
Great. So that was great discussion. I think we all agree on the importance of this. We're going to get some more information. We'll put it on the agenda for the next school committee meeting. If everyone's all set, we can move on.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
I did have that.
I thought you were shorted.
Mrs. Dunn, you had something to add?
It actually, it's two questions for Dr. Vidal. It is in with health and safety. I wasn't, I didn't know exactly what the presentation would be, so it's a bit off of Dr. Vidal's list of items, but one of the things that, that I, I wanted to, to ask about is I don't, I don't know how much people know, you know, people at home, parents, know about what the school department is doing so that we can keep all these students in school. And, I mean, it's winter, our teachers are teaching in classrooms with the windows open. They're cold. The kids that are in school are cold. Our bus drivers, I've been told, our bus drivers have to stay in their car in between their bus routes, bus runs, and I'd like to request, first, I want to know if, if that is happening, and second, is there something we can do so that the bus drivers have a place to stay in between their bus runs? My understanding is the transportation office is too small with, you know, with social distancing requirements, but that just doesn't, it, it just doesn't sound right, and I'd like to ask if we could do something to improve that situation.
So I, I believe this was a unique situation that was brought up due to the high school going remote this, this week and people not having runs, but I will look into it and make sure that, that, that we have options for people so that they're not sitting outside in their cars.
Okay. Then my second question. The cafeterias, have they been provided with a tent to be able to provide remote pickup lunches during the winter?
A tent?
Tent or a shelter?
I, I don't believe so. I think we have onings on most of our schools, and so I, I think the pickup locations haven't changed.
Okay. All right. If you could look into that for us, too, because, again, these are situations that people are not, not aware of, of, of the, the extent of what the school department is trying to do to be able to keep operating. These are extraordinary times, and these are extraordinary situations, but I think we need to make sure that we're taking care of our students and staff as, you know, as best we can and to make sure that they are safe at all times. So, thank you.
So just to be clear, you're asking me to look into the grab-and-go distribution sites at our, for our remote kids? Yep? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Now is that the end of your superintendent's report?
Yes, it is.
I don't have another motion.
Did you guys do this to me on purpose? Okay, so moving on, we are at public participation. Dr. Vidal, is there anyone who wishes to speak? We're going to ask that you raise your hand in Zoom, and when you are connected, please state your name and your address for the record.
Okay, I'm going to, first person with the hand raised is Mary Henry, so I'll bring in Mary. Please unmute and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Mary Henry. I'm the president of PBD Federation of Teachers. I live in PBD at 15 Fay Avenue. I've been listening tonight to this meeting, and I've written some things down, but I, I really want to just speak from the heart here a little bit. As you know, the high school has gone remote this week. We were told that it was staffing issues, but the reality is it was COVID issues. We couldn't staff the school because of COVID. In Dr. Vidal's report, he talked about 90 positive cases and 121 quarantining in the last month. Yet we're told there's no in-school transmission. I don't believe that, and I don't think anybody at the high school believes that. There've been clusters in certain departments, and just because, you know, the, the statements and the, and the tracing says that there isn't, the reality is this disease is spiking more and more and more. Before the holidays, I asked you respectfully to close the schools for a week. Really, I wanted to ask for two, but we knew that other districts were doing it for a week, and this was not done. And so what happened? We had an outbreak, and it got worse, and now we're home. Yet, for the safety of the children, and I am thankful, really truly thankful, that for the safety of the children, they are allowed to learn for each class, for an hour-long class every day. There's lots of instruction going on, and the implication that there is not is really disrespectful to us as professionals because we are working very hard for our children. But what, what the disrespect that's happened to us that is worse is that they are asking and requiring that all teachers and paraprofessionals and staff report to the building every day. Even school committee members here who are working remotely don't have to go in five days a week, and I respect that because it's the right thing to do. It's professional courtesy. That's what's happening in all the districts around PBD. My members ask me, why are we so disrespected? Why don't they care about us? We keep hearing congratulations about what a good job we're doing, what a good job everything is. How is it amazing a school this size is, is going in every day? You know what that is? There's a name for it. It's called toxic positivity, and we're tired of it. We're tired of being congratulated of how good we do when in reality, I'm hearing every day, more and more people, people who wanted to go in hybrid, people who wanted to even go in full-time, fearing for their safety. The quarantine rules are changing. The gateposts keep being mov- the, whatever, goalposts keep, keep being moving, moved, and people are upset. They're hurt. They feel like we are being treated like children instead of adult professionals. I don't know a single teacher who doesn't work several hours after school every single day. What we, what you see as instruction is the tip of the iceberg. That instruction requires preparation, it requires grading, and it requires evaluation and reaching out to children. We raised over $2,000 at the high school. I believe it was $2,100 for children in need, and we are very proud of that, but I didn't hear mention of that tonight. Maybe it was at the last meeting. I don't know. I'm just tired of being told how great we are, and then you put us at increased risk for no reason. To have people attending basketball games, just in the light of the fact that there's a new virulent strain, which according to the CDC has, has been found to have an increased number of cases in children, just puts our people more and more at risk. This form of the virus can be spread within six feet and in under 15 minutes. It's adapting, and instead of thinking about how are we going to get us back into the building, we should be fighting to put teachers at the front of our li- the line along with our well-deserving firefighters and police officers who should be getting vaccinated, and we should be getting vaccinated next to them, but we're not. We keep being told we're essential workers, but we're being treated like we're widgets, like we're replaceable, and we're not. We need you to take care of us. We need you to listen to us. I ask you that you allow the high school teachers to choose whether to work in the buildings or not for the rest of the week. Many teachers will come in, many paraprofessionists will come in, but they want the respect and courtesy to be allowed to make that choice. I ask you to have the public...
We might be having some technical difficulty. Did we lose her, Dr. Vidal?
She is in as, she is in as an attendee. Let me promote her back. Mary, you're back.
I will finish. I had only a little bit left. The last thing I would like is for you to request that the Department of Public Health be invited back into our schools to explain the change rules for quarantining and isolation. Teachers are confused. They see children in who just got diagnosed. They don't understand. We need to understand, and we need to be educated by our Department of Public Health. And as much as you think that the schools are being cleaned, they're not. The custodians are working their, they're working their very hardest, but we do not have enough of them, and we, I have, I had people tell me just yesterday, things simple as not putting soap or paper towels in bathrooms isn't occurring, and these are in areas where special needs students come in. The last thing I want to say is, we want, you want special needs students to come in, but you know that Down syndrome was just added to the CDC list of high-risk, and PBD lost our own child, a 28-year-old young woman, to the coronavirus? We need to think before we just throw people back in school just for the sake of throwing people back in school. We need you to treat us like you care about us, and right now, my members don't feel that way. Thank you for your time.
Just like to remind everyone that we're not allowed to respond, although I'm sure that if Ms. Henry would like to reach out to any of us personally, or Dr. Vidal, I'm sure her questions would be answered, and I thank her for what are her opinions on this call. Is there anyone else, Dr. Vidal?
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. We have, we have Carrie Richards. Carrie, please unmute yourself. State your name and address.
Hi, my name is Carrie Richards, and I live at 7 Ralph Road in PBD. I have three children at the high school in the 10th grade, and I just wanted to say thank you to the school committee, to the teachers, and to the athletic department for everything that you're doing. I've seen an amazing change in my children, just how excited they are to be able to be learning, to be able to be playing sports. They're all student athletes. I appreciate the discussions that continue to go on in these school committee meetings and how you look at all points of view. My, I have a son on the JV basketball team and a daughter on the JV basketball team. Today was their first game. I appreciate very much your vote allowing two guests to come and watch the games. Today, we, we tried to watch both. I know they played against Gloucester, the boys did, and they had a television on Facebook Live that broadcast the game, and we were able to see it, although very small from far away. My daughter, I don't know who did it, but I very much appreciate that there was an Instagram off and on that allowed us to see parts of her game and just support them and everything that they're doing. In the, the springs, or I'm sorry, the fall season, my daughter was on the soccer team, and they did an excellent job of having a roster. We signed in the two guests that came to watch the game. There was hand sanitizer right at the table when we came in. Everyone... at the table when we came in. Everyone socially distanced. We all wore our masks. Everybody was just really excited to be able to be there and support our children. I just wanted to offer a suggestion with the additional cleaning of the bleachers for basketball games, where there are only 12 at most on a team, and the court is so long, there would be the option maybe to also put masking tape marks every six feet for groups, the group of two, and allow people to bring in their own chairs. I know we've done this at other sporting events throughout the year, and that helps to contain everybody's, not to dirty the, the bleachers if that is a, a concern. It's just a suggestion. Again, thank you for everything that you do. It's very much appreciated, and the joy and the confidence that we see in our children means a lot to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richards. We appreciate your call. Anyone else, Dr. Vidal?
Seeing no, no other hand raised?
No other hands?
No other hands.
Okay. That will conclude public participation. Moving on, written communications. I believe this committee discussed a letter that was given to us at the last school committee meeting from Mrs. Nizwentowski, Ms. Eager, Mr. McHugh, Mr. Hawes, and Mr. Blake. We did have discussion on it, and I believe it was inserted in our packet at this time, just to be included in our minutes. So, I don't believe there's any discussion on that. We also have written communications from the PVD City Council. Again, I believe we discussed this at the last school committee meeting, and we did vote to send a letter of support in regards to the library back to the city council. Any discussion on that? Mr. Arnotis?
I don't believe we voted on the letter, right? I believe we sent it to my committee.
Did we?
I thought that rather than send the letter, we're going to have a discussion with them. I was going to touch on it briefly when we got to subcommittees. I'll just say, you know, briefly, I had a conversation with Councilor Cherish earlier. We're going to get that liaison committee together going pretty soon, just to go over a few things. You know, we're getting into budget season. This will be a subject matter as well, but I do believe at the time, we said we want to kind of have some conversations before we do anything formal here.
You're right. I just remember that. You're right, Mr. Arnotis, yes. I'll set, Mr. Hockman. Okay, so, any, oh, Mrs. Dunn?
Just to make a motion to receive the second document and make it part of the record.
Motion to receive, all in favor. That's, that's good. Okay, so, moving on, we're going to go to subcommittee reports. Education Subcommittee, I do believe, I'm sorry, that the mayor will, if there's any new committee assignments, will be taken up at the next school committee meeting. So, we'll just move forward as is. So, Education Subcommittee, Mr. Hockman?
As Dr. Lord tells me, after every school committee meeting, this process is an education in and of itself. That's my only report.
There you go.
The Finance Subcommittee, myself, nothing to report. School Safety Subcommittee?
Nothing to report.
Athletics and Wellness, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, and I meant to bring it up earlier, I apologize, that during the motion that Mr. Amico made, I had had private, prior conversations with Mayor Bettencourt on that subject earlier today, and he, had he been here, would have been in support of that motion as well.
Great. Quality and Standards, Mrs. Dunn?
Nothing to report at this time, but we will have a meeting scheduled between now and the next meeting for the Subcommittee.
Great. Liaison to Parent and Student Advisory Boards, Mrs. Dunn?
We, we are having a parent advisory board meeting this month, but the date is to be determined.
Great, thank you. Building and Ground Subcommittee, is that Mr. Amico?
Nothing to report at this time, thank you.
Special, Special Education Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympio?
Nothing to report right now.
Okay. Liaison to City Council Legislative Delegation, Mr. Arnotis?
Meeting is what, come.
Reported on that. Redistricting Ad Hoc Subcommittee, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. We did meet on January 5th, 2021, moving along in the work for redistricting. The committee, during that meeting, we talked about tools that we may, that we, we think that we're going to need in order to move this process along, and some of those tools come at a cost. Some of those tools are software that the district used to have, or still has a license to, but hasn't been updated in five years, so it's rendering it, that software in particular, something called MapTitude, virtually useless. We need to update that. I did have some conversations this evening, as a matter of fact, with Dr. Lord, about some other software that we have today that we didn't have in 2015, the last time I looked at the subject, in particular Aspen. In 2015, we used MMS, which wasn't nearly as, as dynamic as Aspen, and Aspen also allows, it appears to interface with, and that's probably the wrong word, Mr. Mitchell, I don't mean to sound like I know what I'm talking about when it comes to technology, but, but it, it allows, Aspen already catalogs all of the students in the school district, but it doesn't plot them on a point. Google Maps does plot people on, or does plot things that are put into the, the database, and one of the things we're looking to do is to plot where school, students live, and then look at the geographic boundaries for each of the elementary schools. Boy, that was a long-winded way of saying that the committee has asked me to ask for a budget, so that we have some resources available to purchase some software in particular, maybe some consultants who would be able to put, input some of the information that we're looking to have in. So, with that, I'm going to make a motion for the redistricting Subcommittee, Ad Hoc Subcommittee to have an initial budget of $3,000.
Is there any second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Arnotis. Any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Dunn?
I remember in the past, when redistricting first, when we had our first round of redistricting, which is way back when, and in the, in the intervening years, the equipment purchased was purchased for the, basically for the business manager to, to utilize in his job. So, I think that the way it was handled before was that it was not so much a, a budget for the redistricting Subcommittee, but that it was used to purchase tools that our staff would be using. And I think that might be an easier way to do it, so that Mr. Scanlon would be able to make sure that it's something that's conducive to, to the systems that he currently utilizes with transportation, with any, any of the issues surrounding where our students go to school.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Hockman, do you have any, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Amico?
Sure. Through the chair, Mr. Hockman, is, is the business manager part of the redistricting committee, or?
The superintendent is a member of the redistricting committee, so the administration is certainly represented. I can say also that we have brought on, and many of you are familiar with Dave Kenniston, who was our former business manager. Dave, who worked at both, I think, 2002 redistricting, when the Kylie was closed, and the 2015 redistricting Subcommittee that really didn't render much, if any, results. And it's at his, it's really at his suggestion for some of this software, and he did some research into the cost of it, and I think $3,000 leaves us quite a buffer. I'm not opposed to operating in the manner that Ms. Dunn is suggesting. I mean, whatever's purchased is obviously school department property. We're just, we, we may have some software that may be tailored towards redistricting, that we may want to purchase, and we may have some consultant, might not be the, the proper word, but some IT people who are, would be, have some degree of expertise in this area that would benefit the work that we're doing, that may not have any other benefit for the school district. I don't know whether it would or it wouldn't. You know, we did talk at the Subcommittee meeting about the information that we're looking to use as criteria for, for students and mapping students. I think it has some value, you know, some tangential value. I don't know that I can quantify what that is right now, but I think that there's, you know, we talked earlier about gathering data, and there's always value in gathering data. I don't disagree with that. I just can't, I don't know that I could identify what that benefit would be, and I don't know if Dr. Vidal or Dr. Lord would be able to add to that.
And I think, if I may, through the chair, to Mrs. Dunn's point, there is money allocated in, in lines for supplies and materials in the business office, as well as consultants. And I think that, you know, this is a modest amount of money that we could spend within the current line items, and just allocate it towards the redistricting, which is, is, we have, we have the, the funding for consultants within that line item, and I think that we can, we can make do within the current budget. But I think to Mr. Hockman's point, he just wants to bring it to the committee. They'll be utilizing some of those funds within the appropriate line items for the purpose of redistricting.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Vidal. I wasn't asking for an additional $3,000 on, on top of the budget. But Dr. Vidal is much more articulate and eloquent than I am, so thank you.
So, we have a motion? Everyone's good? Okay, on the motion, roll call vote?
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Oh, you are going to vote, Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
And Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Very good. That concludes the Subcommittee reports. We do have new business that is listed under Mayor Bettencourt regarding minimum wage, but I'm going to ask Dr. Vidal if he can speak to that.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Mayor Bettencourt and I had a discussion on January 1st. As many of you know, the minimum wage was raised to $13.50 per hour. We did an extensive review of our current staff, and we found four staff members that were making $13.35 per hour, and so, we wanted to bring it to the committee, that we'd like to bump them up to $13.50, and then, you know, through the collective bargaining process, we would, we would negotiate, you know, appropriate terms, but we wanted to bring them up. In addition to those four staff members, we also looked at our substitutes. Currently, the lowest-paying substitutes would be making $85 per hour, which over six and a half hours would be just under the $13.50 per hour. So, we'd be looking to, to raise that up to $90 for, for that group. We'd raise everybody up $5 right now, and then again, during collective bargaining, which all the, the units are up, we would then renegotiate. But we wanted to, this was timely because of January 1st, we wanted to anticipate that, and, you know, make those changes appropriately.
Thank you, Dr. Vidal. Mrs. Dunn?
I'd like to follow the recommendation of the superintendent and raise the rate of pay for substitutes to $90 per day.
Second. And the other employees?
And the hourly employees would go from $13.35 to $13.50.
Would you like to make that as a separate motion, or would you like to amend and include?
You know, I'll be honest, I'd like to keep it in a separate, a separate motion, only because that's how we did it the last time. We've, we've had to bump the pay each time the minimum wage is going up.
So, on the first motion, for Mrs. Dunn, roll call vote?
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
And Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
And that is all we have. Any items for the next agenda? Please send them in as you normally do, and I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Good meeting.